A call to order the Planning Commission's September 24th meeting. And first item is approval of the agenda. Are there any motions?
I move to approve the agenda.
We have a motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the approval of the minutes from August 13th and August 28th of this year.
I move for approval.
Motion?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we don't have any items on the consent agenda and no items for the administrative session, so we can go straight into our legislative session. And the first item is Wasatch Machine Hydraulics requesting an amendment to Title 11, Chapter 3, Article 402, to amend the definition of automotive repair minor to include hydraulic. And it looks like...
Oh, no.
...Viner Vice will be presenting that. Okay.
Okay, yes, so this is really pretty straightforward. So Blake Weldon is the owner of Wasatch Machine Hydraulics. It's a petitioner. Currently, the RC zone allows for auto repair minor. We have two auto repair definitions in our code. One auto repair minor and one auto repair major. Minor is basically getting your oil changed, getting your tires rotated or changed. Very basic level repairs. And then the major is if you have, you know, if you're doing major transmission work or engine work or anything that basically isn't just a come and go kind of thing. As my dad explained it, the minor is the stuff I understand. The major is the stuff I get glossy-eyed and he has to explain to me. So originally, in Blake's application, he wanted to include hydraulic repair in the definition of auto repair minor. And we felt that there was enough distinction between the two types of services that instead we would add a definition of hydraulic repair and then make it a permitted use. So that's why you're seeing one amendment to the actual definitions to add hydraulic repair. And then the second to change the use in the land use matrix to allow for it. I will let Blake answer all of the difficult questions about his, the work he does. He's been great. I went down and met with him. He showed me what he did and actually helped to come up with the definition of hydraulic repair minor that we feel is narrow enough to keep the purpose of the zone, but also to allow him to continue to do what he is doing in his current location. One thing that the definition of hydraulic repair has in it that is very specific is that it will not allow for any manufacturing of hydraulic components regardless of their size. But only the repair. And as it was, as it's been explained to me, and like I said, I'll let Blake answer the detailed questions. The hydraulic components are actually taken off of whatever vehicle they're on and repaired. They're vehicles that they stay on. And that's why we're saying from the, that they are repaired separate from the primary machinery. The vehicles, Blake has done work for the city vehicles that have hydraulics in them. A lot of our trash, garbage trucks have them. And so they actually take the hydraulic components off, repair them, and then put them back onto the primary machinery, the primary vehicle. So this will not allow for any of that to be kept on site. Do you have a couple of pictures? Just so you know, he, so Wasatch Hydraulics just has a small area that they are leasing from Toppit Pickup Covers. It has a small office area and then a kind of work area. And this is, you can see here, so there is a little, it's, the darker red is the RC and then there's a couple of little, the one little breakup of highway commercial and then highway commercial around that area. There you see the definitions that we came up with. The repair is limited in length to 44. That is so that the basic equipment that they put the hydraulic machinery on to fix it, that will cover pretty much everything that would need to be repaired. If it got any bigger than that, they would likely be also manufacturing as well as doing the repairs. And so once again, Blake helped me come up with that, with that number. This is the machinery. This is the one that holds, that would be, that is limited to the 44 feet. It extends out to fit the component parts. And that is it. That's kind of, that's the operation that Blake has going on down there. Are there any questions for me?
I have one. If you've got a second.
Sure.
Is there a reason we didn't do hydraulic repair minor?
No, and I, and we can. And I'm glad you, I kind of thought about that as I was, I'm like, oh, we didn't put minor. It would probably mean that we would have to come up with a definition for hydraulic repair major. And so I don't know if there's, Josh, if there's a distinction that you want to make there or if it makes a difference.
It may be handy, just in terms of helping people understand what we're trying to communicate. But anything above this level of work would really need to be, take place in a light industrial manufacturing or heavy industrial manufacturing zone. So it's not a necessary distinction, but it's not, wouldn't be harmful at all to...
Put a minor.
To call it minor.
I just think it might be helpful, and I, I'll be glad when he has a chance to come up and talk about it a little bit more. Because obviously, like a track, I do a lot with the construction equipment. You've got a track hoe with a hydraulics, you know, some big, some big hydraulics in there. And, but that would have, that could not be, they could not come in on a trailer, install, uninstall it, and put it into the shop. It would have to be brought to the shop, uninstalled, right?
Yeah, and so as, yeah, the way we have it now, so that that equipment wouldn't be spending the night there. He does, his, as you can see from his facility, it's not one where the machines, where he could actually pull a truck in or, you know, a vehicle, the primary in. Yeah, and so like Josh said, if it, if it makes it just a cleaner thing, we can simply do that and then that, but it doesn't necessarily need to be, I mean, it's up to you.
Will you go back to the definition, please?
Yes, of course. So...
To Ralph's concern, as I read this from a very, very narrowly, "Primary machinery is not stored on site." I think in arguing it could be made, if I was a business owner, that bringing in a large piece of equipment on a flatbed, removing the component and then having that large piece of equipment be taken away would not be storage. But I think that's probably an activity that we would be concerned about being compatible with generally other RC uses. If this was in, I don't know that it would be, but if this were in front of Smith's or in front of Walmart or some of those other RC, would it be compatible or conducive to the intent of the RC zone to have that type of hauling and, you know, the work, the work? I guess if we, there may be another way to handle it in terms of adding something about, no work can be done outside because then you couldn't come out to the piece of machinery and remove it. But I think there may be something we need to tidy up there.
I think so.
Based on Ralph's.
Yeah, and a lot of that comes from my ignorance of the hydraulic repair process. So you have this, it's good.
We're not just making a change for his business.
Correct.
We're making a change to the code. So if someone else thinks, well, I want to have a business and I want to be able to, because that would be, as a contractor, that would be very helpful for me to have, if I've got a, say I blew a hose on it, I could just bring it in on the trailer. Guy can take the equipment off. I'm not having to like take it off in the yard. You know, I mean, I think everybody would prefer that as far as, so he doesn't do that in his shop. But we, we're amending the code, so I think we have to be very clear for someone that doesn't want to start a business to say, look, what we're talking about is you bring the hydraulic pieces into the business, they're repaired there. Because policing this could be a nightmare. If you say, well, you can only, you can only bring it in and then he has to unhook it. So you bring the track hoe in and then they can't get the fitting off, so end of the day. Then pretty quick, you've got like 10 track hoes. Then you've got, well, we're waiting for a part for that one and then we'll put it back on. I'm just saying, if that's what we want to do with the zone, we have to like change this. What would, and it's not, doesn't look like that's what he's doing in his, his facility, but we're talking about changing the overall code. That's my only concern.
No, and I think that that makes sense. And like I said, that goes to my ignorance of the process and how, and not necessarily knowing what to... So I'm glad that you know these things much better than I do.
I'm not criticizing your...
Oh, I know, I'm not.
I'm just saying, that's what I think we have to be clear. For the next guy that thinks, I'm going to buy a piece of property, he looks it up in the code, right? He buys the property and he says, yeah, I'm going to fix track hoes. This works great. I'm allowed to do hydraulic repair. Great, you know, so he buys the property, puts up the building, goes to pull a business license, and then it's like, well, you can do hydraulic repair. Good, that's what I'm doing. Oh, but yeah, we're, we're taking all the components inside, but we're not anyway.
Okay, no, that, that's good.
I think we ought to like change that a little bit, just in the sense that we're talking about bench type repairs that are being done on hydraulics. Because that's what you're doing, right? Yeah, it's just a bench repair as opposed to mechanic work and other things like that.
And after, when we get to the point of having the Planning Commission discussion after we've heard from the applicant and have the public hearing, it, you have a couple of options. You could suggest some specific language. You could just convey to staff that you want that specific concern addressed and we can draft the language. So you have, you have a number of ways to handle that as you move into the discussion.
Yeah, so your expertise will be helpful in that, thanks.
I'll be a little premature on that, sorry.
No, that's, I appreciate it. Like I said, I learned more about hydraulics than I didn't even, I didn't even know, I didn't know most of this stuff. So if that's all of the questions that you have for me in the staff report, then I will leave you to your own devices.
Thank you. Carla, the applicant would like to come forward and, and say some words?
Yeah. There, yeah. Oh, I got you. There you go, Blake.
What Carla said. Um, I guess what, yeah, it's just, I do everything on the bench. Where is it? Right there. I put 44 feet because from one very end of the bench with the boom extended all the way out on the other, that's the biggest I can handle. I've never done a 44 foot one, that's really big. But yeah, everything's contained onto a four by eight workbench. I have mobile mechanics for when those guys do call and they're like, hey, I just blew it. I need, I send mobile mechanics out to their sites.
We'll pull up, pull it up.
They pull it, okay.
I don't ever want any machinery around because it does tend to pile up and I don't have the space for it, but...
Yeah.
What questions do you guys have for me?
I, I just think that's, my only question was, obviously it works for you. I think it's a great option to be able to repair, do the bench repair in that location. That's my personal opinion, but I just now, that clarifies it, so thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Alright, this is a legislative item, so we will open a public hearing. When you come to the podium, before any comments, please make sure you say your name and your address.
Seeing that no one's coming forward, I'd need to be close.
We have motion?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, discussion. Anything to discuss?
Well, I think going off of Ralph's suggestions, I have worked on hydraulics for 10 years in the Army, so I have a little bit of experience. My only worry would, would be, and it's right along the lines of Ralph, the scope creep, where all of a sudden it becomes a major project. So I think we'd have to put some very specific language to make sure that it fit the area in which the work was being done. I mean, I don't see anything here that's, that would be out of, out of order. But to your point, Ralph, I think we'd better be very specific on our scope here so that, so that scope creep, and we don't turn in the police of this zone. Some of the specifics now, the 40 foot, 44 foot kind of scares me anyways because you, you think bringing that into that area, especially, you know, Josh brings up a good point. A repair shop in front of Smith's or, or one of those other facilities, that's going to be a probably disruption to normal business to get anything maybe even that big. I don't know. It just, it just depends on how it's brought in. So I think, I think it's worth sticking to some sort of parameters of length. Certain equipment won't have anything over certain lengths. So I, I think if we, if we look at what would be appropriate in the, in that context, I think that would be a good way to word the specifics. Anything at certain lengths. At 44, if you feel that's appropriate, to me, that feels like we're now stepping into a, I mean, that, that doesn't get brought in generally in a pickup, so...
Yeah.
Do you want to? Is that?
Yeah, he can, we can ask him a question.
Okay.
That, we could make it a little bit more defined by saying 44 feet fully extended. That's what I kind of meant to convey there. So when it comes in, it's collapsed and it's at 22 feet, which is a significant difference. And then fully extended is 44 on the workbench, if that helps.
So the 44 is once the, when the ramps cleared out.
Exactly.
Pulled all the way.
All the way extended out, pulling it out.
I will tell you one thing I'm concerned about, and this is maybe a whole different tact, is that, so hydraulic fluid obviously is a big issue. I don't know if we, and that specific, I don't, I'm kind of talking specifically in your case, but anytime you have that much of hydraulic fluid, the potential for waste to go into the system, all that kind of stuff is, is a concern.
Containment.
So we may want to put some kind of language in that they have to have some kind of, if they're going to do hydraulic repair, not that people don't change the oil and spill the oil, okay, but hydraulic, when you, when you're repairing a hydraulics in the ramp and the hose breaks or something, then you have, I mean, we have a huge compactor that, you know, it has over 100 gallons. It's not 44 feet, but it has 100 gallons of, you know, fluid.
Would that be, would that be like taken care of under like business license?
That's actually exactly where that's currently taken care of. Any business moving into, any business applying for business license has to fill out a pre-treatment questionnaire through our wastewater division. And it says, this is what I'll be doing, these are the kind of chemicals I may have. Do I have any processes that may generate affluent that? And so they have a whole process set up to...
And they determine...
To, please, isn't the right word, but to evaluate those things and put the proper protections in place as part of our state license in terms of handling our wastewater.
Josh, there's, there's also, when he applies for permit, like if you're going in as a tenant in a new space, that's going to be, those substances and chemicals are going to be controlled under the building code as well.
Correct. Yeah, if there's...
There's a few checks and balances.
Yeah, if there's a change of use or a tenant approval permit needed.
So if there's a drain, you'd have to have a grease trap or something. Just trying to be clear that that's probably a huge impact. And bench repair is probably not going to be as big a deal, but that's my, that's my suggestion, is that we do something like hydraulic repair minor and it's for the bench repair of hydraulic components. They cannot be, you know, removed in the parking lot, you know what I mean? I can't, if I'm a contractor, unfortunately, I'd love to bring my stuff to you and bring it on the trailer and then I'm not, you're not doing anything. I'm out here taking it off in the parking lot. The risk there is, is that if we have a fluid that drops into the, you know, I blow a hose or something when I'm taking that component off, then the fluid could create a hazardous waste situation right there in the parking lot. So I think that's what we're trying to keep out of that. An industrial area, it's totally a different kind of thing. But that would be my suggestion if everyone's in the discussion.
Any other, any more questions for the applicant?
How's it writ, this is probably more for us, but how's it?
Thank you so much.
How's it written in the auto repair minor? Is there, is it?
It's right above the red.
Yeah, it's on the stuff.
Okay, but like, let me, let me clarify, but so if I'm applying for a business license and meet the definitions of an auto repair minor, what are the requirements for containment of hazardous waste and?
It would, it would have to go through...
Yeah, all of those.
That's all managed through the pre-treatment questionnaire and through our wastewater division.
Yeah, we don't, we don't cover that.
So it would be the same way then, right?
Right, yeah. We have, for example, we have a new Valvoline Quick Oil Place coming in next to Smith's. And that will be part of their process as well. I mean, it's a full new build.
Just follow the same process, yeah.
Yeah, we have a process built to accommodate that already, yes.
We don't have to put that in the law, that's because it's already...
So as, as far as the specifics of what we would have modified, it would just be including a clause that it's limited to bench repair. Do we want to include anything that limits length when disassembled at the 44 feet?
Yeah, putting in the max 44 feet when fully extended.
I'm comfortable with the 44 feet because if it's bench repair, you're, you're, you're going to be, have to have some pretty good equipment to get it in there. But if you're saying minor and it's bench, then someone's not going to come. And again, I'm looking for someone looking to buy property or, you know, lease or whatever in that area. They're saying, wait, this is, this allows for hydraulic repair, so...
It doesn't hurt to clarify, you know, that.
So I could make a motion if you'd like, but, and I, my motion is going to be that maybe you draft the language, but that it includes that the hydraulic repair is minor and that it is for the bench repair of hydraulic machine components. Maybe those two things, you could add to those two words and I would probably be com, I would be comfortable with that, so my motion is... I guess I'm ready to make a motion. Okay?
To read that and then at the end, um, your changes.
I'd like to get this squared away so you can move forward. Since we're already held you up.
In arrears.
Okay, so I'll try to do this best I can. Okay, so my motion is that we revise this. Move to recommend amendment of Title 11, Chapter 3, Article 4, definitions to include the definition of hydraulic repair and to amend the Title 11, Chapter 4, Article 3, land use matrix to include hydraulic repair as a permitted use in the RC zone with the following changes, that the title be changed to hydraulic repair minor and then adding bench to the beginning of the next sentence that says bench repair of hydraulic machine components when hydraulic components are removed and repaired separate from the primary machinery. Hydraulic components to be repaired are to be limited in length to 44 feet.
Fully extended.
Fully extended. Trying to get this done for you. Extended and primary machinery is not to be stored on site. Hydraulic repair shall not include manufacturing of hydraulic components regardless of size. There you go. It's a big motion.
I'll second it.
Alright, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did that limit you? Josh? Alright, now we will move on to item two. Travis Menlove requests that the general plan map be amended from the low-density residential to the medium-density residential land use category for properties located at 920 East Center, 928 East Center, and 919 East 100 South. Now, there's two items that relate to this. Are you going to be presenting them together?
Yes.
Okay, so they'll be presented together, but we'll have separate public hearings, separate motions on the two items.
Thank you, Chair, Planning Commission members. And thank you whoever changed the date on my presentation. So it's this, again, as, as the previous item was relatively straightforward. Hopefully, I can clearly convey the intent here. The applicant here at 928 East Center Street has a property that was originally built under an old zone. Up until the 90s, this was zoned R2. And after that point during, as you, it's mentioned in the staff report, when the code was amended to adopt all of the Westfields overlay and to basically include those 1,200 or 1,300 acres, there was a, an overall look at the zone map. And as part of that, they rezoned a large part of this east area of the city from R2 to R110, which is a pretty big jump in terms of zoning classifications. And that led to a number of non-conforming structures as a result of changing that zoning. The applicant has a desire to demolish and to replace their detached garage. Their detached garage is currently just a few feet off of the side property line. And under the current zone, as you can see here in the R110, the side yard for buildings 10 feet in height or more is 8 feet. Whereas in the R2, it's 3 feet. So to accomplish this simple aspect of allowing this homeowner to reconstruct a garage or rebuild a new garage in the same position as an old garage, we need to change the zone back to the R2 that brings those side yard setbacks for the accessory structures into compliance. So the, the proposal tonight, working with applicant and staff, is that we move the R2 line just essentially to the west side of 950 East, which is really the, the breaking point here, you can tell, between the more of the narrow frontage, smaller lots and the wider newer lots here. This east half of 950 East was a subdivision. And then these lots to the west are older lots. So in order to avoid having a spot zone or a small jog in the line we've just recommended, we're recommending to you that we move that over the width of those two lots on Center Street and the one lot on 100 South. Notice in compliance with state code has been mailed to all three of the property owners, including the applicant, stating the planned action, the date of the hearing, their ability to file objections to that or to appear at the public hearing. And our applicant has spoken individually with the adjoining property owners and received their consent for this action.
Including the one on the west?
Correct. The, the two other property owners.
To the north?
So they're...
But not the person to the west?
They're 928, and so this property and this property that would be affected.
I guess what I was asking is that the one to the, the west is already in R2, right?
Right.
No, it's not. 920 is not in R2.
No, sorry.
Excuse me, the, the, the single home with the, right next to it in the, the other color, to the west.
Orange is R2, correct?
Yeah, that's already R2.
Right, okay.
Yes. So we're just moving the R2... So we're just moving the R-two to the east.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Uh, the, an- another concern here would be what additional development entitlement may be secured for this undeveloped piece of property on this cul-de-sac by changing the zone. And, uh, it's, you could look here on the zone map, or the lot size requirements for, uh, in the R-two. In the R-two, you can do twin homes or duplexes, uh, but it requires, uh, ten thousand square feet or nearly a quarter of an acre for the duplex lot. So it is feasible that two duplexes could, if there is enough room with the expansion of the cul-de-sac, be constructed on that remainder piece of property, resulting in an increase in two dwelling units here over the two single-family homes that could probably be constructed today. We haven't engineered that or vetted it out, that's a maximum potential just based on the rough numbers. So that, that could potentially i- in, in some future, uh, allow for two twin homes to be built on that, end of that cul-de-sac.
So even with the completion of that, um, cul-de-sac would leave twenty thousand?
I have not done the full math on that and laid it out. So it may not, but it's, it will, will not be any more than, than that.
What about, what about now turning around the fire trucks and stuff in that area? Are they able to do that now? It looks to me like it's.
I don't know, clearly this was approved at some point, uh.
I wouldn't think so, that's really close to my house. It's kind of a odd, uh, road that goes in there. It looks, it's like it's incomplete.
It is incomplete.
Yeah.
But that would be part of
Because.
the petition if they subdivided that? Or is it subdivided?
Well, if somebody was gonna develop this lot back here, even into one lot, they would need to finish the improvements.
Yeah.
Uh, because these lots were not part of the subdivision. This subdivision is only required to install the street to the opposite curb and gutter. We can't require them to install a whole cul-de-sac.
On the other side.
On the other side of the street.
Yeah.
But that would be the requirement, uh, uh, if a building permit was submitted.
Correct, that lot would need to be improved to city code.
Where's the building, where's the garage that they want to replace? Let me show that. So it's on the interior of the, between those two?
Yes, because if it was on the street side yard, it would, uh, be.
Already be at the three feet.
No, it's twenty.
Side yard.
And R-one-ten.
Side yard and street frontage.
Yeah, street frontage, well, I just, oh, street frontage.
Yeah, twenty.
It would be twenty, independent of what zone it was in.
Yeah, regardless.
Uh, as I mentioned, this, this is the historical zoning map, it was changed, uh, twenty-one years ago. And the extent of that R-two zone was greatly reduced and it was essentially downzoned to the R-one-ten. So the lots are currently non-conforming by frontage and setbacks, even, even the lots themselves don't meet R-one-ten standards. And as I mentioned, it could result in two additional you, dwelling units over what would be permitted today.
Are they, are they not grandfathered in then? Because they, if they don't impact the original footprint or?
They're grandfathered in, but that, and according to our non-conforming structures code, that only counts, that only is so far as the structure is not enlarged or demolished. So if you could hire an arsonist to come and burn it down and then build it on the same footprint, a new nice garage.
Fire truck in there anyway.
No.
That's right.
So. No, unfortunately, uh, yeah, our code doesn't, uh, you can't demolish and replace a non-conforming building.
Can you mostly demolish it?
You're, so you're just sliding over, it's kind of enveloping it, you're not putting a spot just to look at individual locations.
Correct, we're just moving this orange over to here.
Have there been any other petitions for any of the other properties to have that same thing happen before?
Uh, in general across the city?
Uh, no, right in this location.
No, not, not in this area, no. So our recommendation, uh, to you is to recommend approval of the general plan and zone map amendment. And I guess I really didn't cover the general plan amendment, because the general plan identifies this as low-density residential. That does not include the R-two zone, so we need to amend that as shown in your motion to change the general plan map to a category that does include the R-two zone. And that's all I have for my report.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
We move.
Nope, we gotta do, uh, public hearings.
Okay.
All right, so we'll open the public hearing for, uh, discussion on the general plan map amendment. Um, again, if you come up, oh, don't.
Uh, no, you, you're fine. Uh, applicant, if, if you wanted to ask for any comments from the applicant, it would be at this time.
If you have, if you have any comments to share, you can come up and share them with us.
No additional comments. I read through that staff report and I think Josh did a really good job, brought more points than I would've known to bring up. I really just wanna be able to redo a garage. Um, I wish I could've done it without having to spend two thousand dollars in, in amendment fees, but this is the route we gotta take, so, um, apologize for my loss of voice, but the BYU game was pretty loud. Um, yeah, that's really just about it.
Is that the only thing you're planning on doing at this time for that?
Yes, yep. Yeah, the garage currently sits three feet away from the property line. Um, the home was built in nineteen forty. I really would've just liked to be able to tear it down and build it in the exact same spot, um, and that's what I plan on doing.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Okay, so we will open the, um, public hearing for discussion on the general plan map amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential. And again, please, when you come up, say your name and address.
Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the general.
You got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right, then we, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I motion the move to recommend the approval of an amendment to the land use map of general plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential on this par- on the parcels identified as twenty-three, do I wanna go through the numbers? Okay.
You can say as identified.
As identified.
So we have a motion?
A second.
A second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll open the public hearing for discussion on the official zone map amendment to go from the R-one-ten zone to the R-two zone. And you can feel free to come up to the podium.
Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing.
So we have motion to close the public hearing, seconded, all in favor? Aye. All right. Discussion, motions.
Seems like a good plan to me.
I'll move to recommend the approval of an amendment to the official zone map for the R-one-ten single-family residential zone to the two R, single-two family residential zone for the parcels identified within.
So we have a motion?
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have recommended to, uh, amend those two and so the next it'll go to the city council for you. Um, how long, when, how long between ours and the city meeting that it'll be on? It's not two weeks, right? Or is?
Is it next week?
Oh, three. The fifteenth of October, so, exactly, yeah.
There's two of them in the back of the room, you can give them a hard time.
Yeah. They may have other things that they're talking about. We just stick right to the zoning situation.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Wish you good luck.
And, um, so now we can move on to item four. You'll be presenting for us.
This is the perfect finish to your meeting. You're gonna love talking about power. Oh, that's great. I apologize, there's lots of presentations up here. Oh, here, here. That's why I make sure I, I, I might not have hit, oh, it's down here. We did open, yeah. Yeah, right there. That's the one?
Is that the one?
Yep, thank you. Okay, so Josh was just mentioning that you probably haven't discussed impact fees, uh, at length. Since you'll be seeing a number of these plans, this is the first of, there'll probably be seven or eight more uh, over the next couple of months. It might be good just to, just to cover some of the principles of impact fees and what we're trying to accomplish, what they really represent, and it's all in the name, uh, impact fees. Really, you're charging a fee to new development, uh, to cover the costs for, for the impact of that development. So if they require new, uh, electrical infrastructure, power infrastructure to service, uh, their, their, whether it be residential development or, or maybe a business, uh, then they're expected to pay a portion of that cost. Costs have gone up a great deal over the last couple of years, like with anything, right? But power infrastructure in particular is, has really become very expensive, prohibitively expensive. And, uh, in, in particular with the lead times and things, as you mentioned earlier, I think, um, it just makes it very difficult to get the equipment and get things in, in place and have the infrastructure ready. So the whole point of the impact fee again is to cover that new incremental cost that would be, that would be incurred on a system. The issue is, if we don't charge impact fees, then who pays that cost for the new development? And that's where, that's where you either, y- y- you would essentially be, be shouldering that cost as residents or businesses that aren't existing in the city, right? So that would come through rates. So we would have to raise rates because a new development that came in and caused, uh, a requirement for additional infrastructure to be put in place, you'd have to bridge that gap somehow. So the whole thing with impact fees is you need to, need to understand their, their relevance and their importance really, because again, if we don't, then we're asking existing residents and customers to shoulder the cost of, of new development. So my name is Jason Miller, I'm the, the director of the power department. Brandon Graham is here, and Mike Poehler here, they're the smart guys, they're the ones that run the department. They, they're there, they, they, we have really kind of two sides of the department. One is for generation, we have our own generation equipment at Whitehead. But, uh, Brandon, uh, works on the, the distribution system, so with a crew of linemen who are very good and they make sure our system is reliable. So what I wanna do for just a few minutes, and we can go as fast or slow as you want, I don't wanna keep you here too long, but I'm happy to answer as many questions as you have, because it's important that you understand, especially as these other plans come along. So the plan, uh, or the process for developing a capital plan, and capital plan is really synonymous, that's the power department version of a master plan. And then the IFFP is the impact fee, um, fund plan, facilities plan, I'm sorry. Thanks, Josh. So you've got a.
Yeah, it is fun.
Yeah, it is fun, there's lots of fun, there's lots of acronyms in this. We could get into those as much as like, as you like also. Uh, first you have to, to gather historic power demand information and then, uh, current system information. It all becomes part and entry into a big, a big data-dependent model and modeling process. You establish the level of service, so really this is just the, the, the level to which we provide service within our existing system. This will be defined later and, and I'll, I'll describe that. It was just, it was described also in both of those separate documents, uh, that you received. But the key is with the, with the level of service, we don't wanna change that. We're not trying to say we want an increased level of service or we want a decreased level of service, we want to maintain existing. So that's a, that's a key thing to remember. And then, uh, one of the most important things is to estimate power demand and forecast future loads, so what's gonna happen, uh, with, with peaking in the future, just depending largely on, on business growth and, and development growth, residential growth. Then they go in and model the system using those data inputs and identify solutions to issues and, and the projects that are required to build out the system to meet that, that anticipated demand with both, uh, residential and, and commercial customers. That's all documented in the capital plan report. And then you take those projects, once they're documented, you put those in the IFFP, uh, which is also, in this case, uh, connected, the IFA, the impact, uh, fee analysis is part of that as well. So talking about this one in twenty twenty-four, twenty nineteen was the most recent study that was completed. It resulted in a slightly decreased, uh, level of impact fees for both residential and commercial. There, there's a number of reasons for that and we'll see as we get into the actual numbers and what's being recommended through this report, uh, why that's the case here in Springville. But what's different with this report, i- and really, there's methodologies every consultant will bring. We, we go out and hire an independent consultant and, and they'll bring different methodologies just depending on, on their background. They're, they're all specialists and they're engineers within this field, uh, but they'll, they'll approach it in different ways. In this case, there was the concept of buy-in, which was incorporated, which was different to twenty nineteen. And, uh, accurate panel loading was assessed and included in the calculation. So the concept of buy-in, first of all, we have an existing system that's been built. We built that system with, with some additional capacity than what was needed originally, right? So we built it, we oversized it in a sense, when it was first built out. So this concept of buy-in is, if a new developer comes, they can buy some of that existing capacity, you know, instead of again, um, necessarily requiring a new infrastructure, they can buy into part of that, but they're charged for that as part of this impact fee. Panel loading is important. So they try to be much more accurate in this report than what's happened in the past reports. If you think about panel loading, if you think about having maybe a, a water heater or a large container of, of, of water or liquid, the panel loading is how fast you, you pull the water out. So the panel loading for residential customers is gonna be much lower. It's, in this report, it's twelve to twelve point eight-five percent. Whereas for a commercial customer, you're gonna have a twenty-five percent factor applied. What we do is, is the consultant went out, looked at existing businesses, not only in our community, in our experience here within the power department in Springville, but also in other cities to see how they're using it. And commercial is just a much more intensive, much more intensive user than, than residential. So that was an important factor and, and the precision with which that factor was implemented was important for, uh, this, this particular study. You also have to look at the service areas, so for us, it's the boundaries of, of Springville, but also Hobble Creek Canyon. We, we cover that and provide service there. Uh, the demand, um, the existing power system's gonna require expansion to maintain, again, that current level of service. We're not trying to, to grow the level of service or improve it, um, or, or diminish it to any degree. We wanna make sure we keep existing. And then just to anticipate where demand and development's gonna happen, that's how you scope out your projects, the capital projects that'll be required, uh, to provide that power and meet that demand in the future. So level of service, uh, criteria that I was just referring to, uh, transformers within the system, which are all across the system, they have big commercial ones and, and smaller residential ones, they have to remain below their base rating. So again, this is, this is our current standard of service here in Springville for our system. Serve load under N minus one conditions. What this means is if we lose a, a key component of the system, can we still provide power by switching or using an alternative route to get power to your home or to your business? And so that's an important consideration, so we wanna make sure that we have that ability. Uh, distribution circuit loading less than ninety percent. So again, we don't use the total capacity that we build out, we have some excess capacity built in. Uh, voltage at, at plus or minus five percent of normal. Voltage at plus or minus five percent of normal. Those again are just standards, again, to ensure, that's, that's what the city's approach has been, to ensure reliability and ensure that, that we have good consistent service throughout our, our service territory, through area. Existing facilities, we have, we have again remaining substation transformer capacity. And then for future facilities, the engineer will go in as a consultant, will go in and look at all the, the estimated construction year cost. These are projected out, this, this study takes place over a ten-year time horizon. It, it's also important to note that any money collected through impact fees has to be used within six years of its receipt, or technically we have to give that money back to the developer. So it's time sensitive, we can't just be grabbing numbers out of the air, we have to be fairly accurate in terms of what we're projecting. And then this is a key part is if we build a new substation, like they're doing right now, almost at the end of Center Street, if, if you go on the Fort South Overpass, there's that billboard on the north side. Just down from there, we're putting in a new substation to serve a lot of the west side growth that's happening. There's a portion of that the city would need to do anyways, just to, just to keep infrastructure current and to make sure our system is, is maintained and, and ready for not only additional demand, but new demand is only going to take a pers- a percentage of that project. So in other words, it's not going to be a hundred percent attributed to new demand, they're going to have to pay for the whole thing. The city pays for part, ratepayers pay for part essentially, as well as the, the new demand incurring part of that charge as well. So there's a division and that's just based on, 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 you know, how it's attributed to the different, the different requirements of the different customers. This is key, so we've always taken the approach, we don't include generation. So for example, we just completed a twelve million dollar rebuild of, we took out two old generators, legacy generators, and put in three new in their place. Very costly, but we don't put that into the impact fees. We don't charge new development to replace the generators that were already here. That will, that'll take place through rates. So essentially as you pay rates, we save that money and, and eventually are able to go in and, and replace infrastructures we need to. So just a few more things, let's see, we talked about that just briefly. Again, what we'll do is we'll take and based on that panel loading side, size, we'll take and attribute, we'll say, hey, if a customer's going to put in a certain panel size or service size, then there's going to be a, a demand component to that. And this is the, the KVA that's associated with that, that growth or that particular impact to the system. So by taking that estimated KVA usage, you won't see this in a chart, you've already seen it in the reports, but you multiply that by the impact fee rate, which basically gives you your, your assessed impact fee per given panel size, whether it be commercial or residential. Again, this is all stuff we don't need to go through unless you want to, please just stop me if you want to. This is just a list of the projects that were included in the report. These are things we anticipate will have to be done to build the system out to meet demand for the next ten years. And I did skip over quickly, the population size is estimated in ten years to be forty-five thousand people. Right now we're at about thirty-eight, slightly under. That was based off of, the, the projection of forty-five was based off a 2020 census with the, with the two to two point one percent growth rate attributed to that. Again, it's all guesses, right? We have no idea how fast the city's going to, going to build out and that's why it's, it's difficult to make these projections. But it's important because if we don't capture these funds as the development comes in, then again, the existing ratepayers are going to have to shoulder that cost. So this, this right here just illustrates, and this again is in the reports, talks about the buy-in, the, the component that I spoke to earlier, for both existing substation transformers as well as the transmission and distribution system as it stands now. The future system improvements, that's the big one. And then you'll see there, the percentage growth related and impact fee funded, the second column, that's where we're saying, hey, this much is, is going to be attributed to new growth. And then you go over here and it shows again those, those kilowatts attributed to, to, to growth. Ultimately, this brings you down to the four forty-five down here in the corner. This is the factor we apply to whatever the KVA or the, the estimated KVA usage on a given panel size or service for a, for a business or residential customer is going to be. You simply multiply this by, by what that, that load or that demand's going to be and that's what gives you your, your new impact fee estimate or what it's, it's proposed to be. So I apologize, it's a little bit small, but in the red box there, that shows the proposed fees. Now, it's important to note, if you look at these residential ones up here in this first block, these are the one twenty, two forty, one, single phase. So the percent change is negligible. It's, it's zero to slightly negative to, to two percent change. And, and those are relatively low and there's, there's several reasons for that. One of the main reasons, the fact that our system is, is largely built out. We've already done most of the work of building out the system. We're still going to have some more growth, obviously, a lot of residential growth, which is again where we're putting in the substation on the, the west side of town. But it's just the design of our system, like, like Provo for example, we were discussing this with the Utility Board who's also looked at this report and they, they provided a recommendation to go ahead and implement the, the full proposed fee. And we could talk about that more, about their deliberations and their concerns if, if that helps. But with Provo, again, their system is largely built out, so they're not, they're not going to require the same level of impact fees because they don't have to put a whole bunch of new infrastructure in to, to service the, the future demand.
What's our current factor right now?
Our, our current factor?
Yeah, the equivalent to the four forty-five.
Oh, uh, the dollar amount? I couldn't tell you, I want to say it's in the three hundreds, but I couldn't tell you the exact number, what, what it is. What, what you're going to want to look at is if you just look at these two columns, the existing fee is right next to the proposed fee. And so you'll see on residential, it's, it's virtually the same, there's very little difference. Where you see the big jump in the red box is the ninety percent increase you're going to see across these commercial categories. The eighty-nine percent increase. So you see there, you see what I'm talking about, the different columns? So what the, what the proposal is recommending is that for commercial customers, again, they being the more intensive users, as a new developer would come in, then we would charge an impact fee, which would change this year by ninety percent. Now, before you think, well, that's, that's a huge number, it is a big number. But if you look at, at this final slide, what we've done is we've taken a lot of, of a lot of, you know, cities within proximity, a lot of comparables. In the blue, the blue boxes here, the blue columns, this last column, this average, shows an average of all these different cities, right? So Provo, Spanish Fork, Lehigh, Salem, Payson, and Heber City. This shows an average of their fees for these same commercial service sizes. Okay, so then if you go right here in this red box where it says one hundred percent proposed, that's a hundred percent of that ninety percent fee that's, that's being proposed by this, this report. If you take that and you compare it, then right here, and I'm sorry, this is kind of, kind of messy, it's just tough to represent all these numbers, but the percent difference from average, this shows where, where our new fee, if we were to change it by ninety percent-
Our neighbors, yeah.
Is in comparison to the neighbors, or the average of the neighbors. Because as I said, like Provo, it wa- it was funny, we were going through this in Utility Board and the old director of the Provo Power Department was in there. He started texting as soon as he saw this, he's like, hey, we need to update our, our fees because they're way too low. He's like, we haven't revisited this in a long time, and he's like, again, because you're leaving money on the table, that, that existing ratepayers are going to have to, are going to have to pay through rates. Right, so-
You're saying we're sixty-eight percent below-
For residential.
Residential, and then three percent on commercial.
Yes, e- except for these categories where we're slightly, the yellow ones, the yellow highlighter ones, where we're slightly above what that average is for those, for those cities.
And that's on the proposed-
With, with the proposed increase.
With the proposed, I see, thank you.
And then these other ones, these sloppy ones I put on here, again, this was for the Utility Board, I apologize, I just, if, if we were to take seventy-five percent of the proposed increase, then this is where it would put us, which is substantially below the average. So our, our recommendation is of course to, well, i- there's a, there's a reason for this too. We, we've been encouraged strongly by administration, by the mayor, to redo these reports once a year. The last one was done in twenty nineteen, we had COVID and we had all the inflation that's taken place between then and now. So because of that, in a sense, we're, we're probably behind, right? Because costs have shot way up and nobody looked at this and we haven't implemented any new fees. Before that, it was twenty eleven was when the last one was implemented. So, so part of the reason why I'm comfortable saying, hey, we recommend that we implement the full eighty-nine percent increase on commercial is because again, we'll be reevaluating next year. It's not like this is going to sit for a long time. And then we'll be modeling the same things, looking at the, the capital projects on an updated basis, seeing what's actually happened to growth and development in the city. And we'll be able to make all new projections, so if it needs to be adjusted one way or the other, then we can do that. But we'll do it much more frequently, so it's, it's not like it's going to be- Yeah, it'll be smaller changes than a, than a, a large one like this. I would say a lot of this is, is just because there's more precision, I'd say, with the distinction between commercial and residential on that panel loading size that I described.
I got a question for you, so, so when you're talking about new service, are you talking about a new permit? Or are you talking about an upgrade? So for example, if a company comes in and wants to upgrade their service, Stouffers or somebody else, is that in this type of a model or is that not?
Yeah, so, so if somebody was going to upgrade their service substantially, then yes, they would be charged an impact fee. I think it's a, I think it's a modified version, I think they take what they already paid, it would be an additional amount on top of what they paid originally, right?
Just add on top.
But, but, but the, the primary focus here is on new development, so it'd be a new, a new commercial or residential customer coming.
But it still does accommodate existing increase because that's going to impact your infrastructure.
For sure.
So that, I mean, that's, that's a substantial issue.
I- in something like Stouffers, it would be a huge impact if, if they were to do that, yeah. They need to build some new infrastructure out there, but I don't think it's going to be sized differently than it is now.
So because, and, sorry, additional question, so since twenty nineteen, since this hasn't been updated, have the people who, the residents who have been paying rates essentially been carrying the load for the past five years essentially for new development?
The impact fees have always been there, they weren't, so the commercial side wasn't as high as we're proposing here, so-
So, so essentially the residents in paying their rates have been paying the price of inflation for the new development?
Probably subsidizing to some degree the commercial piece of it, yeah. I would, I would say that's fair. Th- this isn't by any means meant to be a makeup provision or any makeup thing, it's just, it's just meant to right-size it for what today's circumstances are. But yeah, you got to think with all the things that were happening now, we haven't had a ton of, of commercial growth over the last three years. I mean, there's been, there's been a few, few larger businesses.
Right.
Uh, power in particular, but, but yeah, it's, it's, the cost has got to be eaten by somebody.
Well, and, and that's, that's mainly just kind of why I ask in terms of, it's, it's had to have been coming from somewhere. But now it's, it, it's not necessarily going to be relieving anything off of rates. It's more just going to be adding that chunk back in on the front end for our, our new development going forward.
Yes, yeah, I think that's a, I think that's an accurate way to, to describe it.
And, and this is based off of capacity, not use, right? For someone puts a big panel with a big capacity, they have to pay that full rate whether they use it or not, so-
Yes.
They don't build a building and then down the road you have to provide capacity, right?
Yeah, uh, no, abs- absolutely, in fact, there'll be some, you know, Brandon was just talking about, you can tell them about the tilt-up maybe with the coma.
So some of these big tilt-ups are going in and putting in two thousand amp services?
Yeah.
And then there's building up with warehouse space and then just paying, providing by paying a hundred amp or over a hundred amps by two thousand amp service, but they still have to pay that each time.
That's good, that's-
Just in case-
Yeah.
Because they don't know what the use is.
That's what I was wanting to make sure we were doing because that's critical for capacity. Because they want it, they want a thousand amp panel, then they have to be able to use supply that, right?
In one instance, there was a sixteen hundred amp service and they wanted an additional service, so they can even pay additional impact fee, additional benefit.
To go that next step. I'm glad to hear that, I just was curious because some people use the model of, you know, use as opposed to capacity. We know that, that's a bad road to go down, so.
When we try, and that's a, that's a really important point you make, is yeah, we've got to build the system for the, the capacity, right? So we've got to build the infrastructure, make it as big as it's, it's anticipated to be whether they use it or not. But then you also capture the component where commercial generally, from experience, our experience here within Springville, but also cities, is much more intensive users. They're going to be using a higher percentage of that capacity than, than a residential customer.
Right, do we, do we give them, and I'm just curious on this point, do we have, are there, is there a rate break if they use an off-hours? Is anything done that way with Springville or is that just-
You mean like interruptible power?
Well, like, okay, so some areas, contractor done developments where they, where Utah Power Light will come in and say, if you use power between, you know, one AM and four AM, we'll give you a rate reduction. We're just talking flat out?
It is just impact fees?
Yeah, it's just the-
Yeah.
I just didn't know was part of your model that, that determined capacity?
There are, there are, I mean, certain customers, large customers, for example, you know, Stouffers or there's, you know, there's a foundry over there in the industrial park. They, you know, there's some, some customers that have like interruptible, for example, we would have the, the, the ability to interrupt them. And if we do that, they get a, they get a benefit as to their rate. But it's not a general practice, it's just with specific customers, I think that we've done that.
Capacity is still just based off of what they have.
Yes, one, one hundred percent.
That's what your model says, I've got this, I need to feed this and I have to build this.
Yeah, we got, we got to have the power for that capacity regardless of whether you use it or not. That's what we're going to charge it for, yep. It, it's also, it's also key to, to think about the fact that this is just one piece of the impact fee pile. You know, for example, for residential customer right now, you know, if you look at this, fifteen hundred bucks we'll say, our total Springville impact fee for the same single family unit's going to be about sixteen thousand bucks. So it's like a tenth to fifteen percent. Now, that'll be different with some of these commercial customers that have big panels and that aren't using as much water, for example, or things like that, or wouldn't have an impact in other areas like they would in power.
Is that it?
That's it, hey.
Any other questions?
I had one, I had one other question, so you talked about the use of, of the, and this is just maybe informational, but you have six years to utilize that, that as a resource to build out, to do whatever else. How is that audited or watched or, you know what I mean? Do we have a, a good measure to tell our, our customers, our people that, yeah, you paid fifty bucks in the system and here's how it was spent? Or, you know, we, we were at five years and six months and we had to do something quick, so? How do you, how do you manage that part of it, I'm curious how that works?
We, we look at it closely managing it against projects, specific capital projects that are mentioned here. You know, we have a list that, that literally is, is, is taken off, we'll allocate those funds that have been collected. The state looks at it heavily, and, and our city administration looks at it heavily. The state will come in and do audits and they'll ask specifically about how you're allocating those funds and you've got to earmark those against specific projects.
I think that's great because that builds confidence with the residents and with the developers because they feel like, okay, I put, I put my ten bucks in the, and I got my ten bucks out. And I think that's a great part of your system then if you're doing that because then they feel like, okay, well, great, we're, we're getting our bang for our buck, so thank you for doing that. Appreciate you guys, it's a tough thing right now, I know electrical equipment, I just know personally from my own, I mean, some transformers are taking sixteen, eighteen months to get, I'm not telling anybody but preaching to the choir, but it is shocking amount.
Yeah.
So some cities have actually forced you to buy your own transformers because people were getting developments done and then they're saying, right, we're ready, where's our transformer? And then their project sits for a year, so.
And this is actually something we've run into with some of the new development here in Springville. It's like we're trying to give them options with different lead times, just, just based on that because they, they have shortened, but not, I mean, the ones we waited for, for the, for the Fredrickson Substation, yeah, two years on those, they're big, I mean, they're-
I really appreciate what you guys are doing, I've been around, I work in lots of different parts of the country and we don't have the outages that you get, you know? My daughter's in Michigan, her power went out for four weeks. I, I just can't imagine, and she's like, she grew up here and she's like, how does this even happen? You know, but for four weeks not having power is unbelievable, so. Thank you for your good job and the nights, you guys get up at night and I know all about that, so.
Very, very much appreciate that and appreciate that comment. The, you know, the, the Power Department has largely built the system here in Springville and it is a great quality system and they are excellent with reliability.
We need good equipment, we need good things to do that, so we're-
One hundred percent.
We appreciate yours, what you're doing, so.
So quick, quick question, and this may or may not be in, in your wheelhouse, but when we offer incentives for businesses to come in, do we incentivize the impact fees?
Do we incentivize the rates, or both?
It it could be both, yeah, it really depends on the deal and the customer coming in. I I would say if it was somebody large enough and the city wanted them badly enough, and there's certain, I mean, you look at what happened in Spanish Fork with. You know, the Costco and how that whole hub started down there, and there were lots of negotiations that that went on, I'm sure, and. You know, concessions on the part of the city, but also, if the business wants to be there, a lot of times you don't have to give them a whole lot, or or. You know, you don't have to go up the farm just to get somebody there to locate, I mean, Costco, that's an ideal location for them, for their perspective, they do, I'm sure, tremendous business. So.
But that's something we can't really factor in, because we don't know which businesses are going to, we're going to need to incentivize or not.
On the impact fees, we. Can. Incentivize with impact fees, but then we have to pay them, they have to be paid.
Right.
So we would have to use either general fund dollars or some type of other financial instrument.
Still have to put it in.
It's, it has to be paid, we can't just waive impact fees.
Right, but what I'm saying is, when we incentivize, then that burden comes back somewhere else.
Yes, and we very rarely, uh, do, we're very conservative, but we have in certain cases. But for example, in Provo. The cities, the. I think it's called City View Apartments on two, between two hundred south and three hundred south on University. The city, through the redevelopment agency, paid the city. Uh, for a substantial amount of that project's impact fees. To offset the cost of the underground parking they built for that project, to get that project done. So, it it can be done, but the impact fee fund has to be kept whole.
But that just sounds like if it was a redev, and they were probably collecting fees.
Correct, so the RDA.
To reimburse.
Correct, the RDA used increment that they had generated to.
Set up a special system to.
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
I do have one more question, so, say for example, a piece of property is being developed. And the power hasn't been run, so it's got, let's say it has a big long cul-de-sac.
Yep.
And then the guy decides, I'm going to do it at the end of the cul-de-sac, and then he has to run the power. From point A clear to the last, and then all those that benefit come along, how do you, how do you manage that with the impact fees?
So we charge an electrical extension fee also, so the developer himself has to pay for that.
Okay.
That, like, you talk about, a lot of these developers will. Develop a piece of property, and then they'll build a house on the farthest.
Yeah.
Place from the power source. And that way, you have to run power all through the facility.
Clear to the end.
And and water and the sewer and everything else, all the infrastructure.
But if you, if you have multiple customers, you know, for the development, in other words, the guy needs. You know, power clear at the end, and then he's had to run that ca- conduit, did you come back and impact each person accordingly, or is he only charged the same as the guy in the first lot?
So this is the same thing we're actually going through right now, if, you know, Lakeside Landing, for example, so you have, you have a set of of. Large developers that each have a big parcel of land within a broader development. So, in that case, and Josh can speak this much more eloquently than I can. But in that case, the city's sharing some cost to get all the infrastructure to them. But then they're also shouldering a a great deal of that cost, I'm talking about roads, I'm talking about sewer infrastructure, everything that's that's required. And so they can have different arrangements, where they pay back over time, or it just, it just depends on the negotiated agreement between the the developers and the city, yeah.
That would only be in the case of off-site improvements, if you're doing a subdivision of fifty lots, and the first house gets built in the back. As part of building that subdivision, you have to put all the power infrastructure in the subdivision on the. The developer has to do that, so once somebody comes in to pull permit. All of that power is already there, and they're just paying the impact fee for their panel size.
Right, because we've done commercial developments before, where, like I said, it's at the end of the road. And then instead of the impact fee being the standard impact fee, it's an impact fee plus. You got to get it to.
The offsites.
The, and then each developer, as they come in, has to pay their portion of that, you know.
To reimburse.
Two hundred foot of, two hundred foot, two hundred.
Yeah, those are, those, we can, we call those connection agreements, or connection reimbursement agreements, we often don't use that tool, we typically would reimburse. Somebody for those offsites through the impact fees that are the other individuals pay.
But it would be, they'd still have to shoulder that upfront.
Yes.
Which is, I think that's a great strategy, because. At least it gets you in there, and then they have the ability to, because you'll have guys that, you know, they'll wait until somebody finally puts it in, and then they're like. Sweet, I just saved ten thousand dollars, so.
The impact fee is designed to cover the cost of those, the city's participation portion of of all those offsite improvements, no matter. When they're put in and when the rest of the development happens.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Enough questions for me.
Yeah, so our our recommendation would just be that, again, I'm not sure how this got documented in your paperwork, or maybe it didn't, but just that we. We were just asked for your recommendation, we'll move this forward to city council, they'll actually be meeting on this next week. Uh, implementing the full, the full increase, and I guess whatever's reflected here in the reports. So, thank you for your time, very much appreciate.
Thank you, Director Miller.
Yeah, it looks like some great due diligence has been done, so that's great.
Okay, so, that was the applicant, right? So we don't have anything else to say. So we'll open the public hearing on the matter of Springville City Power. Update to the Power Capital Facility Plan and Master Plan. Impact Fee Facility Plan and Impact Fee Analysis. And, yeah, just state your name and address if you come up to comment.
You got nothing, Heather?
You have a motion? We have a second, all in favor? Aye. Any discussion?
Good work, thank you for.
Enter. Well done.
Well done.
I I move that we recommend. Approval of this to move it on to city council.
You have a motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that was unanimous as well. And, any other items from you, Director Yess?
Just a reminder, you got a notice from Heather last week, that we'll have our. South Utah County Planning Commission Training on the thirteenth upstairs of the library, on November thirteenth upstairs of the library. So if you all let Heather know your availability for that, so we can do our dinner planning, we'll be. We'll, we look forward to that, we've got a good. A good panel coming, we have some. Representative White, who's been heavily involved in. The Committee on Housing Affordability. As well as representatives from Envision Utah, their planning director and executive director, to discuss some of the statewide strategies that have been. That we're working on in terms of addressing, addressing housing affordability.
Will we still have Planning Commission meeting on the twelfth?
Most likely not, no.
What time is that meeting, Heather? I hope I'm not working in my yard with a alarm set to AM instead of PM. I can't think, I thought, it's getting darker, there I got to go. Sorry.
Seven AM?
Yeah. It was set, it for the morning, well, I set it at six thirty, thinking, now give me half an hour to get in and get ready, yeah, now you know what I look like in the yard.
All right, nothing else, so entertain a motion to close?
A motion to close?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.